Okay, I'm gonna call the, uh, meeting to order. The, uh, call the planning commission meeting for January eleventh to order. Uh, and we'll ask the secretary to, uh, call the role, please.
Mr. Dallow? Mr. Dollar?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Kirk, is that you?
Yes, don't forget to ask them to identify their location.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Okay, Mr. Dallow? Last call, absent, Ms. Gonzalez?
Here, Shelby Township.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith?
Here, Shelby.
Mr. Appone? Mr. Appone?
I believe he is on the call, so why don't we give him a second to figure out that unmute his phone?
Okay.
Or we can come back to him.
Okay, um, Mr. Turner?
Mr. Turner said he may be, uh, coming in late. He had another meeting prior to this.
Okay.
Mr. Grod?
Present, and I am in Shelby Township.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Okay, so Moffett is here on the.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yeah, Mr. Appone?
Yep, I'm here.
Where are you at?
Shelby Township.
Okay, Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Do you want to tell us where you're, where you're located?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in Shelby Township.
All right, thank you. Uh, first item is approve of the agenda. If there are no corrections or changes, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Move by more.
Or.
Report.
More by phone, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Next item is approve of the minutes from the December fourteenth meeting.
So move.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, okay, first substantive item is on under correspondence, uh, Macomb Township. Notice of intent to amend their master thoroughfare plan, or less the planner to offer, uh, a brief comments on this.
Thank you, Chairman Moffett. This is just a, uh, notice from a Combs Township that they're making a minor amendment to their, uh, master plan, um, thoroughfare, and they're just removing a connection of Leoni Drive from Regency Drive to Garfield Road in their jurisdiction. Um, a, a detailed, uh, transportation plan will follow once they have it, uh, completed to the draft version.
Okay. Uh, any questions for the planner on this request, this item? Hearing none, a, a motion to receive and file is appropriate, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. We'll add that motion.
Motion to receive and file.
And support. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, so, uh, this evening we have a, a public hearing that was aborted last, uh, a couple of meetings ago. Now, this is far from the optimal way to to have to deal with this, um, so we'll, uh, uh, I'll ask for everyone's, uh, trying to do this via Zoom. I'll ask for everyone's, uh, patience and, uh, and, and courtesy as we sort of work through this. Um, how the format, how it's gonna work is the petitioner. So if you're not, if you're not recognized, you need to keep your, your mute, your, your, uh, device on mute, please. Cause this will get crazy. And it's not a debate, you know, when you're recognized and you have the floor, you will have the respect of the floor. You will be allowed to speak, offer your opinions or questions, but you don't get to keep jumping back in or out. So I do see there are some folks that are on here that are unmuted. If you could please, you know, mute yourself, because I'd, I'd hate if this thing.
This is, this is why this is an issue. So if it becomes disruptive, I'll just ask the person who is, is, is the, the, the tech person on the account to just start, you know, uh, knocking off the people that are, that are creating. And I don't want to do that, because, you know, it's an important issue. We want everyone's, you know, input. We want you to be aware of what the, how the conversation's going, but we need to have decorum as we try to work through this, so. Having said that, I will ask the secretary to read the notice of the public hearing.
Charter Township of Shelby, due to COVID nineteen pandemic, the public hearing will be held via Zoom. You may participate at no cost in the virtual meeting by calling the following number, dial one three one two six two six six seven nine nine. The meeting ID is eight three one three seven six six nine one seven five. This notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the charter township of Shelby, McCombe County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant David Rickard, North Point Development LLC, four eight two five Northwest Forty First Street, Suite five hundred Riverside, Missouri, six four one five zero rezoning request from R twelve Multiple Family Low Rise and R one C one family residential to light manufacturing LM rezoning petition six dash twenty. This rezoning petition also includes a conditional site plan twenty dash twenty four SLU dash seven that consists of three industrial buildings. The location is vacant land, vacant land located east of Van Dyke. Correction, it should be west of Van Dyke, south of Twenty Three Mile Road. Sidwell number twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one dash two zero one dash zero zero four. Twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one dash two zero one dash zero zero five. Twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one dash two zero one dash zero zero six. Twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one dash two zero one dash zero zero seven. Twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one dash two zero one dash ten. Twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one dash two zero one dash eleven. Twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one dash two zero one dash thirteen. And twenty three dash zero seven dash twenty one. Two zero one dash twelve. The legal description is as follows. Planning Commission meet, will meet on Monday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty one at seven PM via Zoom for the purpose of holding a public hearing for this conditional rezoning and site plan application. Please follow the instructions to attend the meeting via Zoom, dial one three one two six two six six seven nine nine and enter the meeting ID, access ID, number eight three one three seven six six nine one seven five. Please check the Shelby Township Planning website for further information on this meeting. The application for rezoning and special land use zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the planning and zoning department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from eight thirty AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one ten of two thousand six is amended. Publication date was on December twenty third, two thousand twenty, in the Shelby Utica News. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. There were four hundred eighty-three property owners, three applicants, and nine utilities were notified by first-class mail on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, thank you. Um, just so everyone is aware, I think our legal, the requirement is usually within three hundred feet, which was about two hundred and fifty people. We nearly doubled the number of people, so anyone who either had called on it, who'd sent any kind of correspondence, who'd signed any kind of petition was included, uh, to be made aware and offered, uh, to participate, um, in the meeting this evening. Uh, Mr. Kirk did the, 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 uh, the notice, uh, that was published, made all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's, a record reflect that, that we received dozens and dozens of, of correspondence. Most of them almost entirely, uh, having negative opinions of what's being proposed. And there was also a petition that, that, uh, had been circulated, and we did receive a copy of that. Uh, so the format for the public hearing, uh, will be as follows. Uh, the petitioner representative will, uh, will, will, uh, be called to state what they're requesting and their reasons for it. Other than bring it to the board for, to the commissioners to offer any questions. Um, I'll then open it up to the floor, and at that point, a, a group representative or anyone that wishes to ask a question or, or offer a comment is free to do so. Um, there's also, I believe, the ability that if you didn't want to, to be recognized um, via the camera or the phone, uh, to offer a comment, um, that, 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 that we will see as well, and that will be included, um, as we consider the request. Uh, and then, it's again, this isn't a debate, so we'll let them, the, the, the petitioner state their reasons, what they want. We'll let the, 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 the public offer their comments. Then, after we've gone through that process, we'll then bring the petitioner back up, uh, and offer, let them respond, you know, to what was, what was, what was addressed, so. With that, I will ask the petitioner, um, or representative, um, I think, I imagine there'll probably be a few. But if you could say your name and your address for the record, and let's begin.
Thanks, Jerry. Thanks, Planning Commission. Um, David Rickard here with North Point Development. Um, my address is forty eight twenty five Northwest Forty First Street, Riverside, Missouri, six four one three two. And then my colleague Brent Miles will actually be doing the presentation. Do you mind if I share my screen?
Uh, no, go ahead.
Okay. Brent, just confirming you're on.
Yeah, good, good evening, everyone. Can everyone here and see me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is Brent Miles. I'm one of the owners and founders of North Point. I'm based here in Kansas City as well. Same address as David, forty eight twenty five Northwest Forty First Street, Riverside, Missouri, six four one five two. Well, thank you all for taking the time to hear us tonight. I know that this has, uh, a public debate, obviously. Um, you have a lot of folks on, on the call, as well as, um, as you said, Mr. Moffett, the number of letters that have been sent in. A little bit about us, um, if you, um, if you've done any research on us, um, North Point as a whole. Dave, would you mind going to the next slide? We're based in Kansas City. Um, myself and six others started our firm about nine years ago. And I'm proud to say that, you know, we're the largest privately-held industrial landlord in the United States. Um, that's not meant as braggart, that's meant as, um, I'm proud of that. Um, I'm surprised of it at the same time. Um, and, uh, we have offices all over the United States. We have about six offices. We do work in, in about thirty states today. And, uh, we own about eighty-five million square feet, um, of industrial manufacturing distribution space across the country in that. And we add about a million to two million square feet a month at this pace, so we are, um, a very active developer. Um, if you bought something from a, a Lowe's, a Home Depot, Walmart, Chewy dot com, um, one of my favorites, it probably came out of a warehouse that we own somewhere in the country. Um, Chewy is a really good example. We, we've done the last eight Chewy dot coms across the US. Um, great customer, great company. And, um, you know, maybe an example of them is, you know, in one of their facilities alone, you might see, you know, a thousand jobs or seven hundred jobs. So these are our jobs that I'm proud that, you know, we've helped create with our buildings in communities all over the country. So, um, that's a, probably enough about us as a, as a national scale, um, in, um, Michigan. Um, in, in specific, and kind of looking at what we've done, um, just for reference, and we're not new to Michigan. And we have a project going up over in Romulus today, and we have another project that's getting ready to kick off in Romulus. Um, you've, if you've done any research, there are some recent articles about us about the redevelopment of the Cadillac stamping plant. And then we, um, completed a, a large project for, uh, GM up in, in Burton, Michigan. So, um, we've, we've been in Michigan, we've invested in Michigan, we're proud to say that we've done that. Um, this project, if you, um, take a look, I think generally everybody knows, um, where this is, but obviously here's a general location map to, um, to orientate the, uh, the public as well, who may, who may not be aware. But, uh, obviously, this is a project that, um, we're excited about. We've spent a lot of time and energy and resources. I think what you'll hear tonight is that we've, we've taken this seriously. We've built a team of very capable professionals. We've heard the, you know, community's input, um, we've heard concerns they've had. I think we've done a good job of trying to mitigate those concerns and, and used a professional approach to do so. So, okay, if you want to go to the next one, Dave? You know, this project, um, is, y- y- you probably know a little bit about the history, but I'm not gonna regurgitate the whole slide. I think probably, um, a couple of things, um, you know, it was purchased, it was purchased, um, around the two thousand four mark, and, and obviously because of the environmental, um, situation there and, and contamination and the covenant, um, you know, single-family residential is just not a viable option for this property. It's just not. I would say one of our specialties as a company is that we take and, and we re- redevelop sites. So, um, we buy brownfield sites, environmentally contaminated sites all over the country. Again, if you've done any research to us, you, you know that we just recently purchased a US steel site in Bucks County, uh, Pennsylvania. Um, we've bought racer sites, um, from the GM Trust all over the country. Um, I think what's in, important here is that, you know, we've been working with Eagle. Obviously, we've been working with Ford on the environmental. We're very comfortable with the environmental, um, and getting it, um, redeveloped and getting it back in, in coordinating with a cleanup, um, with Eagle and Ford. And, you know, what I look at is the future land use, the, the Ford restrictive covenant. Um, that was recorded at closing. It limits the future uses that are compatible with non-residential cleanup. I think that's an important factor as you, as you debate this topic tonight. And then two thousand seventeen master plan recommendations, again, you know, how we looked at this, and, and we do this every day and, and do this around the country is, 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 we think this is an important factor. Consider rezoning this property, um, to light manufacturing. That's right out of the, uh, out of the townships of two thousand seventeen master plan recommendations. So, um, with all that in mind, I think that we've tried to propose a project that meets that criteria, knowing that this needs to be redeveloped, knowing that it needs to be cleaned up, having a covenant, and having a site that, in a rezoning, you know, reclassification that matches the, the city's master plan. Okay? So, um, for those of you who haven't seen the plan, it's a three-building plan. This is just shy of about eighty-seven million dollar capital investment. No matter where you go in the country, eighty-seven million dollars is a big capital investment, I think, on this site. Uh, this should be, and will be welcomed by many to have this amount of, you know, jobs and capital investment that comes into the community. It's a three-building plan. Um, we call it a, a combination of single-load buildings, meaning like building one has docks on one side, um, car parking on the other, and two, what we call cross-dock plant, uh, building plants. Buildings two and three are, are those cross-docks, as you can see, they're essentially twins. I think there's important things to, to, to look at on this exhibit. Obviously, we've, um, went for a light, uh, manufacturing district zoning classification. Um, we have heavy, um, on one side of us and heavy on the other. I think that's important. Um, we're not seeking the heavy, uh, manufacturing, um, district, uh, rezoning. We're, we're being more in accordance with the, uh, future master plan of the light. And then, as you see, we're going to talk a little bit about ways that we've tried to mitigate, um, so, uh, site, sound, noise, lighting, and, uh, we've had all our professionals do studies in accordance with the city's code. We meet, uh, met or exceeded all of those. Um, again, I think this is a project that, uh, is warranted here. I think this is a project that could be, um, exciting. If you look at the totality of what this means for this piece of property and getting it into viable economic development use. Dave, you want to go to the next slide? These are building examples. These are real-life photos, um, that I had our team take. Um, what's funny is that our office is in, in that building, right there. Um, as you can see, I office in that building every single day. Um, but these are building examples. We have over three hundred buildings that we've built. Um, almost all of them look the same. The, the paint scheme may be a little bit different here and there, but in general, this is what we build all around the country, and sometimes there's distribution in these buildings, and sometimes there's manufacturing or light manufacturing or assembly. But on the outside, I'm proud to say that these are the architecture that we use. This is how this building will look. It'd be fully landscaped, obviously lit. Yeah, as you can see, we're gonna talk a little bit about lighting, but you can see it on a couple of these buildings, these wall pack, what we call wall pack, lights that are facing down to, um, avoid, you know, um, light pollution. But I'm really proud of these, uh, uh, industrial buildings. As I jokingly say, these aren't your grandpa's manufacturing facilities. The, the industrial buildings have changed over time. This would be an institutional-level capital investment that we're making, and this is something that we don't sell. This is something that we will hold and, and invest in for the next forty, fifty years as a company. Go ahead, Dave. So, um, obviously, um, we held a, a community meeting, and this is just a general, um, overview of what we heard. Um, we heard light, um, and, and we tried to take all of these issues and, and break them down for you and say, here's what we heard, and here's how we tried to alleviate the concerns from the neighborhood. We did a light study, we have berm and fence, we'll go through that. We did a noise study, security, and how we limited the points of access, especially to the neighborhood, um, air quality, and, and we did a study on that and, and compared it to, uh, Michigan standards. Um, traffic, which we've, um, you know, done a study and, and had that approved by the, uh, by the county. And then, obviously, with property values, I hear this all over the country. I, I just take a general perspective of that. If you put eighty-seven million dollars of institutional capital next to a neighborhood that creates, you know, roughly a thousand jobs, that's usually really good for the neighborhood and, and the property values, that in terms of job creation, people wanting to buy in the neighborhood, people want to buy houses, fix them up, live in them. So, um, Dave, if you wouldn't mind going to the next, to the next one. So, again, we can have, um, as much conversation on these as anybody would like, but basically did a section A and section B, what would be the viewshed from these houses? Um, we've, um, put a berm in, um, we've increased the setback. We've, we've landscaped that berm, and we put a fence on top of the berm. So, I think from a visual standpoint, we've tried to do everything that we can. We meet and exceed the city's, um, code and recommendation for these items. Um, not only is this help from a visual standpoint, but as we talk through in a little bit, this also helps from a noise and also helps from a light pollution standpoint. So with a berm and fence and landscaping, keeping the existing vegetation, all of these are important factors of how we try to mitigate, you know, our impact to the adjoining properties. Um, you can see, and I know it's a little bit small, but back there just a little bit, Dave, you can see the minimum setbacks and where we're at. And, and really try to, um, we'll call it shrink the project as much as we can while still having a viable project, to try to lessen our impacts. I, I don't think that we can shrink much more and still have a viable project. But we tried to really, um, think through what we're going to say tonight and what we're going to present. And can we present the best-case scenario for this neighborhood by still having a viable project? So, that's what we presented here. And Dave, if you wouldn't mind? Um, we also did a light study. Uh, as you know, the, the, the city, the township has a, as a code standard. Uh, we've done a photometric plan here to reduce, um, light pollution. As you saw in those pictures, we primarily use wall pack lights, um, full metal haylight, cutoff lenses attached to the buildings. So we're, we want security at these buildings, right? There's going to be, um, people who work here who come early in the morning or, or have to stay after hours when, in the fall and the winter, as we know. We want to make sure that people feel safe as they walk to their car and, and provide that. But we can do that in a smart way, so that it's not bleeding across that property line. So, what this does, and, and we, I think we've submitted to the city, is that we've, we've done our, our light study. Um, we can hit a, we can hit a zero, um, at the property line with our, our light pollution study and, and, and will adhere to the city's, um, zero-foot candle boundary, um, requirement. And we can accomplish that and still meet our goals of a safe and secure site for our tenants and, and their employees. Um, sound was next, and sound is something that we take very serious. We have a, a sound engineer that we use all around the country. Um, we know that, that obviously, um, there's going to be trucks, there's going to be traffic. Um, you can see on the, on the left with the six-foot berm as the township required. Here's where, um, your decibels bleed into that neighborhood. You have a sixty-five decibel, um, code requirement. Um, we've done this to adhere to a fifty-foot code, uh, fifty-foot decibel code requirement, um, self-imposed. Um, but as you can see, not only was that visual, the ten-foot berm and fence, um, for, for screening, but it also helps with the sound emitting as well. So we're basically containing all that sound at the fifty-decibel level, um, on our site. I think what's important, a- as you think about that, well, how do I know what fifty decibels is? I think if you look at this next chart, you kind of get an understanding of what, you know, what that means in practicality. So, as you can see, the township code requirement is sixty-five. Um, you all can picture in your mind the sound of a vacuum cleaner or an air conditioner. Um, we're at that fifty, at that fifty-decibel mark, which is essentially the sound of the refrigerator. We're, um, just a little bit above that in your home. So, that's how we think about things, and again, setting the buildings back, adding the berm, adding the fence, adding the landscaping, all, um, all help us achieve that sub-sixty-five township code, uh, minimum. So, I think we've put a lot of thought and care into the, into the sound, uh, pollution as well here. And Dave, if you wouldn't mind going to the next? So, um, we also, um, heard that air quality was an issue, and, and, and really, in, in very simple form. Uh, Michigan has an air quality standard, um, per, per state statute. Um, we're about a tenth of that with our site. Um, and no matter how you measure it, even on a worst-case scenario, full traffic, we're successful and we land a tenant with a lot of jobs, we're still running about a tenth of that Michigan air quality requirement. So, this project doesn't have, um, from, you know, a professional's opinion, doesn't really have any, any impact from a, um, air quality standpoint. Dave, if you wouldn't mind going to the next. Um, traffic, um, ba- basically the same thing. You know, traffic study was done, um, by our engineers. Um, that traffic study is, is currently, I think, being reviewed by the township. I think it was been reviewed and approved by the county. Um, there's obviously, um, no impact or appreciable, um, not appreciable impact, um, to the existing road network. This road network was something that drew us to this site from the very beginning. And as you can see from a security standpoint, we're getting all our traffic, none of them go through the neighborhood. Obviously, you've got that fence and berm sitting there. We're pushing up all our traffic up on the, on Twenty Three Mile Road, and, and that's what the traffic study. Um, and that's what the traffic study contemplates, and, and, and again, has been reviewed and, and certified by our engineers and working with the various local officials that review and approve those. Next, Dave? So, in summary, I'll close, and then, you know, we've got our team of professionals here and myself to answer any questions. But from our standpoint, and again, we don't live there, we're not, we're not residents, but we want to come and invest in your community. We want to invest eighty-seven million dollars in your community and, and create several hundred, hopefully thousands of jobs on a site that's environmentally contaminated with a restrictive covenant that fits within the fa- future land use designation. It's less intensive from a zoning standpoint than what's around it, and I think we've done a, a really good job of listening and modify our plan. I think we've modified it five or six times now of how we could landscape berm, how we protect against lighting and sound seepage and exceeding those setbacks. So, um, with that, I know there'll be a lot of questions, but I'll, uh, in my presentation and answer any questions that you may have, um, from the body or from the public.
Great, thank you. Uh, why don't you unshare that, uh, screen? Okay, thank you. Uh, bring it to the board, um, and, and I'll ask for the, the pleasure of the board. Is the, the, could, do the commissioners want to comment now? Could you want to hear, hear from the public, and then we can do our comments after?
Can we hear from the public first, Mr. Chair?
Sure. All right, well, let's just do that then. Uh, okay, this is the only pu- this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this rezoning request and special land use. Uh, your remarks will be entered into the Record for Township Board Evaluation. The planning commission is a recommending body. The township board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. Uh, at this point, anyone from the public is free to offer their, uh, their, ask a question, offer their comments, or if there's a growth, group, group spokesperson. Now, I have been made aware that, uh, there were some representatives of, of, uh, the Packard community that, uh, that, uh, had identified themselves and wanted to speak on a number of topics. So I'm gonna call through those individuals first. Hopefully that will take care of a lion's share of the questions or concerns that, uh, probably two hundred, roughly two hundred people on the call have. Um, but if not, then we'll, we'll, we'll start taking people individually. First person I have on this list is Mike Malone, um, who was gonna sort of offer opening comments from.
Yep, good, good evening, Mr. Chair, and, uh, to the board. Can you hear and see me okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, just, I'm the president of the, uh, master community here in Central Park. I just kind of wanted to offer uh, our thanks to both the petitioner and, and to this board for hearing us tonight. Uh, we've kind of informed the residents that, like you stated earlier, that we're going to have a group of five or six people that have talked to certain topics. And then anyone, anyone else to, to let down the redundancies, if they can just, uh, simply just say their name and their address, and if they're opposed or against, uh, to save you guys some time and keep uniformity with this going on. So that's, uh, the request that we have from, from our, uh, board here. So, I think, uh, my, my address again is four nine three one six Saint Nicholas here in Shelby Township in Central Park. here in Shelby Township in Central Park. And I am against the rezoning of this due to the promises that were made during the initial zoning of this that was kept presidential. So I will pass it on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a Mike Grobel, who's going to speak on the property history?
Yes, my name is Mike Grobel. I reside at four nine 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 seven Lexington Avenue East, Shelby Township. And that's my residence, which I purchased sixteen years ago this month. I'd just like to briefly comment on some of the rezoning changes that have happened here in section twenty one over the past two decades. During that time, all of the once vacant property immediately adjacent to the former Ford motor company property has been rezoned by the township from heavy manufacturing to a lesser intense residential land use category. Additionally, the township approved two planned unit developments for those residential areas, one of them being the Central Park community where I live and the other for the seventy nine acres that are now the subject of this rezoning request. By those decisions over time, the township demonstrated their belief that the highest and best use of this land encompassed by those planned unit developments should be residential, not industrial. One of those two planned unit developments is now fully developed, while the other one apparently ran into the Great Recession and never got off the ground. There's now nearly eight hundred occupied residential units here in the Central Park Plan Unit Development adjacent to those seventy nine acres. Shelby Township planners and officials spent considerable time and effort in negotiating and improving the Central Park P U D, and it's been developed accordingly into a fine place to live. All those efforts and results stand to be compromised, though, if the planning commission and board of trustees fail to protect their handiwork by allowing more industrial land use back into section twenty one. The property owners in the Central Park Plan Unit Development all bought with the understanding that these seventy nine acres were to be developed as residential. Let's keep it that way.
Okay, thank you. Next, Crystal Cooper regarding noise.
Hello. My name is Crystal Cooper. I am a resident of Central Park Manners. I live at five zero one four two Lexington Avenue East. My concern is the noise issue. I am a mother of a ten year old son with autism, and there are five children living as residents right now currently on Lexington Avenue East who have autism. For those who don't know, autism is a neurological disorder that causes sensory issues. Noise is one of the sensory issues. Loud or repetitive noises can be very harmful and detrimental to our children. It triggers what scientists and doctors call meltdowns. These meltdowns can consist of crying, screaming, hitting, self harm, harm to others and property destruction, and they can last for hours. It's very difficult to calm them down once a meltdown is triggered. Our concern is that the noises, even with the berm and the fence on the berm, this is right in our backyard. And Amazon has a twenty foot berm, and we can still hear all the noises from Amazon. We hear constant high lows beeping. You can hear trucks, you can hear banging from trucks being loaded and unloaded. So this is a huge concern since this is right in our backyard. I just want to really, you know, get to that issue of the noise for for the safety of our children. The we've been here for ten years. This is my son was born here. This is the only home he knows. And the I just, the sound of high lows beeping, trucks running and banging is very harmful and detrimental to their minds. It 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 takes a lot for them, and that that would be a daily struggle for them to deal with that, the consistency of the noise. Their homes should be a safe I just feel that even with the ten foot berm and the ten foot tall wooden fence, I don't think it would stop the noises since it's so close. It's right in our backyard. So that's my concern, and I would just, I'm asking that you please reconsider your plans. This is their home, this is their backyard, and I just, I'm asking that you please reconsider.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jim Ertman. Is Jim Ertman on the call?
He needs to unmute.
Yeah, he's got mute on. All right, sorry about that, I apologize.
It happens.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for listening to my brief comments. My name is Jim Ertman, I live at five zero zero eight eight Watling Street, Shelby Township, Michigan. I'm in the Central Park condos as well. My family and I own two condos in this complex, and we're very happy to be here. Central Park is a family oriented community. Many of us see each other often during daily walks or driveway patio socialization and even at the farmer's market. When we purchased our condo, one of the documents we used for judgment was the Shelby Township zoning ordinance, okay? So I was surprised to hear that there was a proposal to rezon the area. And I asked myself, how will this rezoning or development improve the community? In my opinion, I don't think it will. Anyway, it led me to two concerns that are very important to us here. Personal safety and property security. A couple of things that the Safe at Home Organization talks about is knowing your neighbors and having boundaries. With this type of lease or rental property that they're proposing, there's no way we'll know who the tenants are, what they're like. And it sounds like they will probably be working three shifts with approximately a thousand employees, is what I heard. That's about three hundred employees per shift per day. What I would like to know is how, what the plan is to ensure our safety that's going to keep these people out of our backyards. If you look at the proximity of the proposed project compared to the boundary of Central Park, it's very close. The dimension I saw on the drawing was two hundred and sixteen feet. Two hundred and sixteen feet sounds like a long distance, but it's really only the size of a Little League baseball field. A small child can run two hundred feet in a matter of seconds. It's not that, it's not that big. Anyway, I don't feel that the proposal provides adequate boundaries between our homes. Some of the, for example, the truck path is very near, right next to our backyard. This is right outside our bedroom windows. There's not enough separation between our community and the proposal. I would like to invite you to take a look at the berms and the separation that have been developed at the Meyer parking lot between the truck wells and the community. Take a look at those berms and also take a look at the separation at Kroger at twenty six and Van Dyke. Look at the separation that that they've installed there between the actual Kroger building and the community there. So in closing, I would just like to ask the planning commissioners and the board of trustees, as you consider this development, please continue to keep our safety and security in mind. And also, please consider, these are not just houses in a row. These are our homes, all right? And I really think this is a terrible idea, and I'd like to ask you to please do everything you can to stop this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jan Gamilinski.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Janet Gamilinski. I reside at five zero one eight eight Leo Court, Shelby Township, four eight three one seven. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak with regard to the rezoning of the subject property. My concern, and I'm sure the concern of the majority of the residents of Central Park south of and adjacent to the proposed development, is the traffic impact it will have on the surrounding main roads as well as the traffic within the proposed development, which will directly and adversely impact the residents at the southern portion of the property. To mitigate traffic on the main road signage, I'm told, is to be directing trucks to and from the property onto M fifty, M fifty three, which is currently being proposed but does not address traffic on Van Dyke or Shelby Bo- Road, both of which would be affected. This presents an issue that needs to be addressed. With regard to traffic within the proposed development, I refer to a meeting which was held between the developer and Central Park residents on October first, twenty twenty. In that meeting, several questions arose relative to the placement of buildings and roads as well as vehicle traffic within the proposed development itself. It was realized during that meeting that at the southern edges of the property adjacent to the Kensington and Manners condo complexes, many of which are designed with their bedrooms facing that property line, there will be a road roughly two hundred to three hundred feet from the existing homes with a ten foot berm in between to mediate traffic noise levels. The developer stated that the loudest noises would be from trucks idling and driving through. He also noted that the expected traffic volume within the development twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, would encompass approximately seven hundred and twenty trips for the whole day. Traffic volumes of this degree will most definitely result in considerable noise levels at all times of the day and or night. As a result of this information, questions posed were, can the road be moved to the northern portion of the property closer to twenty three mile? And the answer was no, due to the water table on the property. When asked if the trucks could be kept off the southern portion of the property or the road simply eliminated, the answer was it would not be possible. The majority of residents in the Central Park are already experiencing considerable noise, especially at night, from the Amazon property, which has a twenty foot berm. That being said, it doesn't seem feasible feasible to me that a ten foot berm will mediate the noise level from the proposed property. If members of the planning commission are not familiar with the close proximity of the property line between the southern portion of the proposed development and the northern portion of Central Park, perhaps a visit to the site would assist you in your decision making process that you so that you could be made aware of how close this development would be to our homes. Although I speak to traffic concerns connected with the proposed development, there are many other issues that have already been or will be noted during this meeting, none of which I can visualize having any positive effects from only a negative impact that they will have on our health and well being in this community, in addition to decreasing our home values, especially for those residents at residents, excuse me, at our at or near the southern property line. In light of the concerns presented, I respectfully and strongly request that you unanimously recommend that this property remain zoned residential to the Shelby Township Board of Trustees. I thank you for your time and listening to my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Jill Becker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jill Becker. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I live at five zero zero five six Watling in the Manners at Central Park. I also have two other family members in the subdivision. My mom, who lives on Lexington South, and my godmother, who lives on Lexington North, which backs up directly to the development that's being discussed today. I dropped off a packet for each of the Shelby Township planners prior to the previous meeting. It's printed on gold paper, and hopefully you have that there in your folder. The studies that I'll be referencing are in your packet for your review at a later date, if you wish. I'm a real estate agent with ReMax Metropolitan in Shelby Township. I have eight years of real estate experience. I've sold many of the used condos in this development, and I was the real estate agent that helped the builder sell the forty seven new condos in our subdivision, the Manners at Central Park. They were built from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. I'm currently helping him sell the new condos on East Broadway in the Villas at Central Park. When we sold those condos in the Manners, the families that bought these condos were told that the property in question was zoned residential because that's what was filed on the township. Today, the township is proposing to rezon this property to light manufacturing and warehousing. The rezoning of this property will have a significant negative impact on our property value that would be caused by such types of pollution as noise, light and air, non-accus diesel orders and an increase in neighborhood traffic, truck traffic at all hours, a loss of aesthetic aesthetic land values and an increase in general community safety. Overall, there would be a severe degradation of our quality of life here in Central Park. A study done in two thousand fifteen by Georgia State University in your packet for review showed that the value of residential properties within a three quarter mile radius of industrial operations steadily declined over time by an average of fifteen percent. That particular radius applied to Central Park would encompass all seven hundred and eighty seven of our homes here in Central Park. The other study I'm referencing was done in two thousand ten by the University of Houston, which is also in your packet. This study reinforces the significant negative impact on residential property values nearby industrial operations. It found that in just its literature review, that proximity to industrial land uses is almost universally found to have a deleterious or detrimental effect on residential property values. These studies also indicated that property value loss would begin immediately upon rezoning, not just when the construction and industrial industrial operations would begin. So let's talk numbers. A rough estimate of the overall current market value of our seven hundred and eighty seven homes here in Central Park is two hundred and twenty million dollars. That estimate is based on a minimal market valuation of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for each of the seven hundred and eighty seven homes, and that number is on the low side. I'd like to share some exact actual examples of recent sales with you to show that we have a strong incline here in property values in Central Park. The first two examples are from the Manners at Central Park. The first condo was built in two thousand and eight and was purchased for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It recently sold for three hundred thousand dollars in November of twenty twenty. The second one was built in two thousand seventeen, was purchased for three hundred and fourteen thousand, and it sold in December of twenty twenty for three hundred and fifty five thousand. The next example is from Kensington. The condo was built in two thousand seventeen, purchased for two hundred and sixty three thousand, and it sold for two ninety five in October of twenty twenty. The most recent sales of the new construction condos in the Villas at Central Park recently sold for three hundred and twenty six, three hundred and twenty nine, two at three hundred and fifty, and one is pending at three hundred and sixty thousand. Applying the eventual fifteen percent property value decline finding of the Georgia State University study, the market value of Central Park residents would shrink by about thirty three million dollars or almost forty two thousand dollars per resident if the rezoning of this property is approved. Individually, those families closest to the Shelby Commerce Center would likely see higher than that fifteen percent property value decline. These are the people who paid a premium for their lots, a premium so that they wouldn't have anyone living directly behind them, let alone an industrial complex. And now there's going to be three massive buildings in a road with constant truck traffic twenty four hours a day within a short distance of their backyard. If that isn't a slap in the face, I don't know what is. The severe impact on the property values is going to cause more issues for the surrounding families of Central Park. The issues include not are not limited to the major loss of equity in our homes. This loss of equity can affect affect available funds via home equity loans that could be used for a variety of things. Home improvement, financing, advanced education, paying off credit card debt, vacations and other quality of life activities. Some residents will find themselves underwater on their mortgages, such as veterans who finance their homes with little to no money down. Further, there's going to be a decline in Central Park tax base. A rough estimate of the tax revenue impact of that decline could amount to approximately four million dollars total over several years, based on the increasingly negative devaluation percentage trend found by the Georgia State Study. The negative tax impact would have a consequent negative impact on the Shelby Township budgets for essential services upon which we rely, such as firefighters, police, other first responders and overall general township services. We, as homeowners, generate more tax revenue for the township than any industrial building. For example, the tax abatements in place for our Amazon neighbors only paid approximately fifty thousand dollars in taxes as of last year. At an average of thirty five hundred dollars in property taxes per year, our seven hundred and eighty seven families generate over three million dollars a year. There would be a negative impact on our Utica School and Macomb Intermediate School district budgets as well, as other regional benefits many of our families derive via the taxes we pay. Those benefits, as enumerated on our tax statements, include here on Clinton Metro Parks, the Smart Bus, the Detroit Zoo, the Detroit Institute of Arts, Macomb Community Parks, the Smart Bus, the Detroit Zoo, the Detroit Institute of Arts, Macomb Community Veteran Services, General Macomb County Services, the Macomb Community College, and the overall state education program funding. The rezoning of the land north of Central Park from residential to light manufacturing and warehousing, and the subsequent constructing and operating of over 1 million square feet of industrial-type businesses in what is proposed to be called the Shelby Commerce Center, will have a significant negative effect on the property values of all 787 homes in Central Park, and it will significantly degrade the quality of life we enjoy here in Central Park. To summarize, we, as families of Central Park, strongly recommend that both the Shelby Township Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees unanimously not approve this change. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, Sandy McLeod?
Yes, my name is Sandy McLeod, or legally Hugh McLeod, and I live at 50124 Blado Court in Central Park, and I'm about 300 feet from the parcels at issue. And I want to address the economic impact analysis required by the Shelby Township zoning ordinance. I did the research into the industrial operations impact on nearby residential property values that Jill Becker just addressed in her statement. As for my background, I was a U.S. Army career officer with many years of assignments at the Army's Tank Automotive Command in Warren. And during my 25-year active career, and for about 12 years post-retirement, I managed or oversaw the management of military vehicle research, development, manufacturing, maintenance, and warehousing operations, all of which can be characterized as either light or heavy industrial operations. In more recent years, I worked on economic development projects for the state of Michigan, specifically with the Michigan Defense Center of MEDC. My efforts included economic impact research and analysis and strategic planning. In my research for this Shelby Township rezoning and industrial development proposal, I reviewed numerous studies and professional real estate journal articles relevant to the economic impact of industrial zoning and industrial business operations on adjacent residential areas. There was consistency across all studies and articles. The impact of industrial zoning and business operations on nearby residential property values is significantly negative. I found nothing to the contrary. Two of the studies which Jill referenced were very comprehensive, and they quantified this negative property value impact. And as you heard, they ranged up to an average decline of negative 15%, depending on how far away from the site the properties were located and how large the industrial sites were. Given that published research data and information, I believe that the economic impact analysis required by the Shelby Township zoning ordinance, specifically that relating to the tax impact of this proposed project, must factor in, if not already done or intended, the negative 15% impact on the tax revenue that comes from all 787 residential properties of Central Park. Further, that taxed impact analysis, if not already done, should look out at least five years, but better 10 years, and include the impact of any possible tax abatement, similar to that recently given to the Amazon project. Now, finally, with respect to the jobs part of the economic analysis, I believe consideration should be given to the question of how many of those jobs, those 670 jobs mentioned, temporary or permanent, will go to Shelby Township residents, as well as how many of the construction subcontracts would go to Shelby Township businesses? And if not already known, consideration should be given to how many of the operators of the three warehouses and/or distribution centers will be Shelby Township companies? It's great to have business situated locally, but if they bring few or no jobs to local residents or businesses, they obviously don't do much for our individual citizens here in Shelby Township. In closing, I hope that you will recognize and demonstrate that you care deeply about the enormous contribution that Central Park as a community and its residents as individuals make to Shelby Township by not recommending approval of this industrial project, and instead pursuing a development that is a win-win-win for all parties: Shelby Township, Central Park, and a residential developer. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Now, to wrap up, Jeff Bailey?
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Jeff Bailey, 50024 Watling. And you know what? I just wanted to share my little story with you, and I'm somewhat going to echo everything, things that many people have said. But I've been a resident here for a little over three years, coming here after 25 years of living in the country, and that's my backyard up north here. I was convinced I was going to hate it. Always changing neighbors, constant noise. I was convinced I was going to hate it, but I married a beautiful woman here, and those are the things you do, right? The truth is, I couldn't have been more wrong, because what I have come to discover is that Central Park really is a nice little oasis right here in the busy town, busy city of Shelby, and it's something the township should be very proud of. Now, I've come to know several of my neighbors. There's many retirees, many people like myself who are within a few short years of retiring, and even some younger families, as we heard Crystal talk earlier. And one thing that, one common theme in my conversations with many people is that we truly view our community as unique among condo communities. We're not the typical transient condo community. In fact, it's quite the opposite. It's peaceful here. It's quiet. It's safe, in a great location. I, myself, I've got three critical doctors within a six-mile radius. It's awesome. That's why I moved here, one of the reasons why I moved here. It's not transient. People are putting down roots here, and we're putting money into our homes. My wife and I, in fact, we abandoned plans to build a new home in Macomb Township in favor of living here, and poured money into remodeling the inside of her condo. And the final inspection on our new deck was completed last week. That's $75,000, folks, that we just spent, because we love this community. That being said, we recognize important decisions have to be made about the adjoining property. Those decisions have the obvious impact of revenue for the city, but those decisions potentially have a huge impact on the lives of me and my neighbors. And I just want to share with you, again, kind of echoing what earlier folks have said. We're nervous about wondering whether our voices will truly be heard. We're nervous about our safety, our peace and quiet, and quite frankly, we're nervous about whether some of us are going to have to move again. That's just my little story, but I think you've heard, you know, the thoughts of a lot of good people here. And I forget who said it, but we are a family here in this community. It's our homes. It's not just condos in a row. This is our home, and many of us have earned the right, you know, after decades of hard work, to live in peace and quiet. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was, that completed the list that I was provided from the association. So at this point, if there is something that wasn't addressed, and someone needs to...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is the host. There are about three people with their hands raised. I'll go over them first. Is there, would Grant Allen like to speak? Grant Allen?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, okay, thank you. So, yeah, my name is Grant Allen. I live at 7122 north of Central Park. I don't live as close as to the development as some of the other individuals. However, I do agree with the people that live right there. You know, they live right next to the Amazon development. I think they kind of got a raw deal to begin with. However, it's Amazon. It's a home run. I would, of course, agree that Amazon should be built right there. I would second probably a different opinion in the fact that that's, that could be some very valuable land that could be developed for future development, some type of commercial, you know, something in the future. I grew up in a city in Troy where there's no land left at all for anything. Shelby should keep that land available to develop as they see fit, and not some unnamed light industrial. It just seems like a waste and garbage of, you know, it's just a waste. You know, so please consider that. The residents in this area are strongly against this area. It's a waste of land, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Next person is area code 586, last three numbers, 957. Would you like to speak?
I have already spoke. That is my number. Thank you.
Okay, next person is Timothy Fisher. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. My name's Timothy Fisher. This is my wife, Barbara. We live at 5105 Watling Street. We are about 100 yards from where these trucks are going to be operating 24 hours a day. Our principal concern is the noise and air pollution, which has already been discussed, but I want to focus on the truck part of it. This is going to be an awful lot of diesel trucks, and I understand there's 120 docks. So that leads me to believe that every night, there's going to be about 40 trucks backing up and beeping constantly, starting up, stopping, and all that, cycling around. So between the noise and the air pollution, those are our two biggest concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is area code 586, last three numbers, 414. Would you like to speak?
Yes, this is Nancy Frankowski, 50089 Watling. We just closed on our condo in December. If this was disclosed to us, do you think we would have bought it, knowing that it could have been rezoned to industrial? We were looking at other condos in different areas, and we chose not to live there because it was too close to main streets and constantly listened to the traffic. The neighbors don't want to listen to construction, traffic, noise, and smell. We want to be inside and outside of our homes to enjoy the peace and quiet. Our valuations are going to go down. We are moving from an area that the house valuation is less. We're spending a lot of money to move into this area, and now we're learning that there's going to be industrial zoning possibly. A ton-foot berm with a fence on it is going to look terrible. Our valuations are going to go down, and it's not going to stop the noise for all residents. I'm sure there are other industrial zone properties for this company to build on. Would you want to live next door to industrial business? Please make the right decision and keep this property zone residential. Thank you.
Next up is Wendy Ludovicus. Would you like to speak?
Hello, my name is Wendy Ludovicus. I live at 50123 Scott Court, Shelby Township, Michigan. During North Point's presentation this evening, there was a couple items that was brought up that was concerning to me, and I don't think addressed by anybody else. It was my understanding that they made in their statement that the property that they want to build on is no longer suitable for residential housing. Now, I was under the impression that Ford Motor Company was supposed to thoroughly clean up that property, and that would never be contaminated. So I don't know what happened with that situation, but that's something that probably should be really looked into before there's any type of buildings placed on any of that property. And I do oppose of the light industrial property building there. And also, in their presentation, they stated that the berm does not take into consideration or land in which it will not block out light. I do not want to live in a community that is daylight 24/7. I don't want the noise, and I hope that the township opposes the building of this light industrial complex. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Glenn Susko?
Yes, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. My name is Glenn Susko. My address is 7133 Churco. I do not live in Central Park. I reside...
You muted yourself, Glenn.
Sorry. All right, I'm back. My name is Glenn Susko. I live at 7133 Churco. I do not live in Central Park. I reside about three-quarters of a mile directly north of the subject property in a subdivision called Brookside Manor. I am against rezoning requests. My main reason is noise pollution. Currently, on any given night, with the windows open, you can hear truck engines, high-low beeping, and trailer doors slamming shut. I truly believe that this rezoning action would increase the already very noisy situation. Thank you, and I urge you not to not consider approving this request.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Nick Shindel. Would you like to speak?
Actually, we can't hear you, Mr. Shindel.
Yes, you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, old microphone. My name is Nick. I live at 7537 Gannon Court. I don't really have a lot to say. You know, I've heard everyone's stories here. I just want to say that I'm in my 30s, and we built this house a couple years ago to put down roots in Shelby Township. And part of the attraction for us, I'm not from here, I actually grew up on the west side, but part of the attraction was parks and quiet and open area. And, you know, we bought this as our 25-year house, where we were going to raise our kids and maybe have our grandkids here someday. Please don't make me regret that decision. This is not a good thing for anybody. I can't even see how it's good for the township with the study that I think Jill Becker referenced, that if the valuations of our homes go down, that certainly would offset any tax revenue that you get. And I don't think a township needs to be run like a business. You know, I mean, Shelby Township is a great place to live, and we have money for police and fire and libraries and schools, and it doesn't always need more, more, more. So, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, next up is area code 586662. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm Lisa Smith from 7052 Anderson Court. I'm strongly against the rezoning of this property. I bought my home with the understanding and reassurance that this land was zoned residential and would eventually be used for residential purposes. I would never have invested a quarter of a million dollars in my home if this was zoned to be light industrial 150 feet away from me. I'm sure most of my neighbors feel the same way, with many homes valued closer to half a million dollars in our sub. I spoke with Scott Alef in 2017, prior to purchasing my home, and was assured that this was zoned residential, and was told that this would not be built except for single multiple family units. The significant negative property value effect would cause environmental pollutions of all kinds, noise, light, air, non-accus diesel odors, and create adverse health environment, truck traffic at all hours, and a loss of aesthetic land views, and an increase in risk for general community safety. It will negatively harm me personally, as I have severe asthma, and the reduced air quality from truck exhaust is inculcable to me personally with 120 truck bays? Really? We also suffer from tremendous noise and air quality pollution already by Amazon, who I'm sure also had the finest sound engineers available to them as well. However, they fail, and we listen to trucks and high-low traffic all night long. Market values for residences would result... Market values for residences would result, I think it was Jill that said, in losing equity on average thirty-seven thousand dollars per home. Is this company willing to reimburse us upfront for that? Overall, there would be a severe degradation to the quality of life here in Central Park. I beg you to consider all of these horrible consequences for the family who have lived here and invested and reject the rezoning changes they are proposing. It is unacceptable to over a thousand people almost that live in that neighborhood drowning this that you not turn our beautiful homes into trash with this change to zoning. Please insist that the original intent on this land for residential development be the only one allowed on this land now and in the future. I'm sure there are other industrial properties that they could build on that are already zoned light residential. This property was zoned residential, not not industrial. And I respectfully ask that you maintain the original purpose for this land. There are, I think, about two hundred people on this call right now during COVID. And I strongly believe that the Shelby Township Planning Commission should unanimously support the two hundred people that live here and not recommend approval. Subsequently, the Shelby Township Board of Trustees should unanimously not approve the request by North Point Development that will significantly degrade the quality of life we enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Justin Robinson. Would you like to speak?
Yes, good evening. I'm with the Detroit Regional Partnership. My address is one thousand, one Woodward, Detroit, Michigan, four, eight, oh, two, six. I'm not here in any way to diminish the concerns of the residents. I'm here to share a little bit about the perspective of the Regional Economic Development Group. Our mission is to create jobs and sustain jobs in the region. As we look at southeast Michigan in Macomb County in particular, manufacturing is the driver of this economy. Nearly seventy thousand of the residents of the county work in that industry. In the last five years, it's been about eight percent growth, more than five thousand new jobs in that sector. Transportation warehousing similarly, about eleven thousand folks employed in those businesses. It's almost a fifty-five percent growth. As we look out into the future, you know, we understand, you know, as part of a healthy community is also right employment and jobs for residents. And as we look at the implications of COVID, you know, we really see growth happening in these two areas, manufacturing and logistics. The challenge has become where to locate these types of operations. And truthfully, in Wayne, Oakland and Macomb Counties, it's becoming more and more difficult to find locations for these type of operations to be cited. Some of the implications due to that are we're losing companies, right, to other locations because they can't find appropriate buildings to, to locate in. Or we have a difficult challenge attracting companies looking for this type of growth. Looking at the Van Dyke Mount corridor currently, there's less than one percent vacancy of industrial space available, over fifty thousand square feet. In the twenty-three mile road corridor or in Shelby Township as a whole, it's two percent. So it's not necessarily right an easy option these days to find locations for these buildings. So, you know, we come at this from the perspective of, you know, we, we need to find a way to sustain the companies here, our new jobs. And the reality is it's becoming harder and harder to find locations. Our experience has been developers like North Point have come into the market and done an excellent job bringing inventory online to meet the needs of businesses. So again, I appreciate the concern of the residents and I'm not diminishing it. But we have less and less options these days where to locate options, buildings of this nature to meet future job growth. So just wanted to share that perspective. Thank you.
Next up is Doug. Doug, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to hit the wrong one there. I'd like to thank the speakers that have all spoke. I agree with just about everything everyone said.
Can we get your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your name and address.
Doug DiAgostino. I live on four nine nine oh eight East Broadway. I'm a new resident here, moved in in August. My wife and I have retired here. We were looking to live here long term and obviously we expected that area up there to be residential or vacant land as it appeared. Again, I'd like to thank all the prior speakers. To speak to Justin's point, I've been in business for forty years as a CPA, done a lot of consulting with businesses, including companies like Ford Motor Company and Coles. And the size of this project and the piece of land that it's on just does not appear appropriate to be enclosed and encircled by what's primarily a residential area. It's going to be real degrading to the residential area at the expense of the business. I do understand and respect the businesses' needs to find locations. This is just not the one and I hope the board recognizes the right one with this type of a project. Thank you and I hope you take our considerations when you make your decision. Thank you.
Next up is Vicky Rowinsky. Would you like to speak?
Yes, good evening, Vicky Rowinsky. I'm the Director for Macomb County Planning and Economic Development. Address is one South Main Street, seventh floor, Mount Clemens, Michigan, four, eight, oh, four, three. I have been listening this evening to every single one of you in the comments that have come on this property. As the Planning and Economic Development Director, I will tell you, this particular piece of land comes with many challenges. I know the history was given on this particular piece of property, the contamination that currently resides. The fact that the land was zoned manufacturing at one point, heavy manufacturing at one point in its history, zoned residential and presented to you today is, is the rezoning request for it to go to light industrial. As Justin Robinson, one of the partners, partners at the Detroit Regional Partnership just got done speaking, I will tell you, you know, we get the calls day in and day out of developers looking for land in, in Macomb County. Macomb County land wise, we're the smallest county, ninth smallest county in the state of Michigan. You know, at some point we are going to run out of land, so we have to be really smart and diligent with the land that we have. The challenges we face as a county, you know, looking at our green space as well as land that was zoned industrial in the past that has gone through that contamination, to have a company come forth and state that they'll look at the environmental and help clean up this land. I think that is something to really be considered. To have a developer really listen to your needs as residents, I think is also very important. You know, there has to be a healthy balance between what works for the community of Shelby Township, what works for those that live and reside in the county. You know, ultimately, our goal in the county is to make sure that we provide a space that is welcoming, not only for businesses, but for residents and quality of life. And that's a position we'll continue to take. You know, I would urge the Shelby Township Commission to really consider, you know, what, what do you do with this piece of land? That is a challenge to you personally, trying to figure out how do you get that back on, on the tax roll? But also finding that balance between what the community's wants are as well as the, the demand that we see out there in industrial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up we have Rick Lipsky. Would you like to speak?
Yes, please. My name is Rick Lipsky. I live at five, zero, one, zero, nine Lexington Avenue East. I'm about three, I'm two units from Lexington North. So I'm at the north end of Lexington Avenue East. I'll be very close to that south property line and echoing everyone else before us, before me. The noise is my main concern. It's, I can't imagine what that would be like for the residents along Lexington Avenue North. I'd be livid. But you, you can't convince me on a straightaway drive that those trucks aren't going to be hauling ass. I'm sorry for my language. There's not going to be idling noise. There's going to be revving noise and they're going to be ripping along that, that straightaway making noise. My parents lived with me. I brought them in here about five years ago. They're both elderly in their nineties. My, my mom constantly comments on how quiet it is in this neighborhood. And they came from a quiet street in Sterling Heights. So it's even quieter for them here. It's a peaceful community as others have said and it's just outrageous to me that's that. The person just before said, smart and diligent as far as the developer and the residents. When you put a straightaway in a building so tall, so close to residential area, that's not being smart. It's not. No one can convince me that we're not going to hear that noise. We hear it from Amazon. We heard it from Visteon before. I've been here since two thousand and five. We heard it from Visteon. We can hear gunshots from river bends. I mean, the noise travels in, in this community and it's just outrageous. But one thing that no one has touched on, that I would like to touch on, and I'm an architect. So I understand, I understand trying to get rezoning. I understand building presentations. That building is tall. Section A, it, it's nearly twice as tall as the, as the condo unit. Now, I, like I said, I live on Lexington Avenue East. My approach to my house would be going north. I'm going to see the top of that building, given how close it is to the condo. I don't understand how you can put something that close to the residential. I just don't and I'm sorry. But I'd like to thank everyone of our group's speakers. I think they did an excellent job. I am against this. It is not exciting as the, as the presenter explained in the beginning. It's not exciting for us. It might be exciting for you. It is not exciting for us. I do live here. I do live here. Lexington Avenue East, right down the street, three units from where this property line is. So please don't tell me I don't live here. But it's, it's not exciting to us. It is not. I bought this house planning to retire here. I bought it knowing that the, the plan was to have residential to the north. It even had a connecting element that we could connect to twenty-three mile road, which I thought was appealing. Had I known that one day this would be proposed to be industrial, I would not have bought here. I, I moved back here. I lived in, I grew up in Washington Shelby Township area, moved to Rochester, lived there for twelve years. I moved back to Shelby Township. Please don't make me move out of Shelby Township. I'm against this and please take all this into consideration and reject this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up we have Sandarella. Would you like to speak?
You need to unmute yourself, ma'am.
Yes, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sandy Ray Pach. I live at five, zero, two, zero, zero Bethesda Court, Shelby Township, Michigan, four, eight, three, one, seven, and I'm right on the berm. So I'm very, very concerned about this, especially the noise. And if it's such a problem for let's say it being so close, why don't they just make smaller buildings? So there'd be more distance between. Why don't they make a higher berm? You know, so we're not going to have to listen to all the beeps of the trucks, the high lows, the noises of the trucks. Everything everyone has said is absolutely true and awesome. They've done a very, very good job. And I'm just very, very concerned and I don't want to have to move from here. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, there is no one else with their hand. Oh, somebody just raised their hand. Dennis Van Drop. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, it's Dennis Van Dorp and I live at seven, three, one, five, Stevens Court. I'm a new resident. I've been here two and a half years. I express the same concerns that others have, in, in particular with the noise issue. The noise from Amazon is constant. You hear the, the noise coming from them, the banging and the trucks and everything else that goes on over there. And for me, the noise issue is, you know, part of a bother for myself and my wife, but also for my pets. My pets hate all this noise from the trucks and everything. At times they won't even go outside to go to the, use the restroom because they're, they're scared of what those noises are outside. And, and you hear that as well as the gunshots. And you can look, look like that, Jerry, but that's okay. I'm surprised that, that this is the type of growth we're looking for, for our community. And that we're not looking towards the residential portion of this. And I'm also a little bit surprised that at the beginning that the potential builder that's looking at the site hadn't apologized to the one hundred plus residents that were here the first time and, and they no showed. They could have at least started out trying to be a good neighbor if they're eventually going to be a neighbor. Anyway, I, my vote is to stay residential and to vote this down. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up we have Rich and Denise. Would you like to speak?
Yes. My name is Denise Peruski. I live at five, zero, one, nine, three Blado Court, Shelby Township. We have lived here for eleven years. We are probably one of the closest condos to this proposed building. We bought our condo here with the knowledge that it was going to be residential. Now we're going to have this huge building behind us. Why on earth would you think that putting up this building with trucks right behind a subdivision would be a good spot? We are mostly retirees who live here in our home all day. Some of us have grandchildren that we babysit. The noise and pollution from these trucks will not be good. We can hear the Amazon plant where we are and we're not even close. Who is going to want to buy our condo with this right behind us? I don't consider this light manufacturing. Our bedrooms are right behind the road. Please leave it residential. Build condos or apartment buildings like the fifty-five and over that you want to build at twenty-five and mound. This land was supposed to be a continuation of Central Park like in New York. Please do not destroy our peaceful area that we have enjoyed till now. We are asking you to not let this business be built so close to our condos. If you want, you are invited to come to my condo just to see how close we will be to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up we have Marissa. Marissa, would you like to speak?
Yes, hi. Thank you for listening to my comment. My name is Marissa Harper. I live at four, nine, five, seven, six Alexander. And my husband and I moved here in two thousand and sixteen in the newer portion of the sub. I oppose the rezoning of this property. I am in agreement with the people from our community who spoke in the beginning and just wanted to reiterate a couple thoughts. I'm very concerned about the noise that everyone's talking about. And something I've kept hearing from everyone is that many, if not all people, relied on the zoning of this property as being residential and choosing to move to this community and it just, it's not fair to change that when so many people have relied on that and invested money and chosen to build their homes based on that. So thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, okay, well, I'm going to give it a three count to, to just make sure that there's not anyone else that wants to offer a comment. Going once, going twice. Nope, we got two people.
We got two people.
Yep.
Mitri's iPhone. Would you like to speak?
Hi, my name is Mitri. I am from four, nine, two, three, six Brooklyn Shelby Township, Michigan. We bought this property four years ago. This is my primary home. I have two kids here. I am opposed to the building which is proposed here right next to the property and Central Park. We have two kids and, you know, they both are my younger daughters. I want a neighborhood which is safe for her. Of course, you know, with property prices going down and so much invested in this home, I believe it, some different kind of a property there would be more suitable. And also like, you know, there were already some intrusions with, you know, that we noticed in last three, four months here in Central Park. I believe, you know, residential building, if they build there, that would be more suitable and safer for the community than the zoning of industrial. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up we have Jeff Fenesev. Would you like to speak?
Hi, Jeff Fenesev, six, eight, seven, nine Kingsland, Shelby Township. Just wanted
Just wanna say, been a resident here in Central Park for 16 years and opposed this proposal for the reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Bernie. Bernie, would you like to speak?
Yes, Bernie Wangards from 50190 Scott Court. I bought here January 5, 2005, and we had to pay extra to be back in this location, $8,000 to be in a quiet area. So I would assume that entailed Bethesda, Scott Court, and Blado. So you add $5,000 back 2005 over all these years. So Shelby Township had to get extra tax money for over all these years for us living here in a quiet zone. And now it's gonna get all noisy and lights due to this possible building. And I have COD, COPD, so that's gonna bother my asthma. And I'm prone to migraines constantly, so all the noise is gonna bother me and the lights. So I'm wondering, who's gonna suggest what I put on my bedroom windows, which is only gonna be 75 feet away, to keep the noise and the lights out? I mean, this is ridiculous from my point of view to have this put back in our backyard. I'm sorry. I totally hope the planning board refuses this. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, next up, we have Melissa's iPhone. Would you like to speak? Melissa's iPhone. Doesn't appear you have a microphone hooked up right now, so we will go to the next person. We will leave you in case you have your microphone hooked up somehow. We'll go to Ken Ken. Ken Ken, would you like to speak?
Hello, my name is Ken Chung. I live in 7513 Gannon Court, Shelby Township, right next door to Nick, who spoke earlier. My backyard is literally, I could see the storage unit. I feel very terrible for everyone who lives right by Amazon. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like if they actually have a light industrial building in their backyard. In times when there's a cell towers, when the generator comes on, I could actually hear it buzzing. There's no wall or anything on outside of backyard, but granted the fact that they're gonna have a beam over there, but the building's gonna be taller. So I'm against this light industrial rezoning. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Amanda Karp. Amanda Karp, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate what a lot of my neighbors have said. I'm at 7751 Ryder, and that we're just opposed to it. You know, we bought with it being residential. And we know with the noise and the noise pollution that will happen, that, you know, it'll just really ruin the peaceful community that, you know, we bought purposefully in and that we've come to love. And so, you know, we just oppose the rezoning, and we'd like to keep it residential. Thank you.
Okay, so that appears to be the last of the hands raised, so I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Mr. Kirk, let you get your connect on. I've got a question for you.
Good.
So the restrictive covenant that Ford Motor Company submitted, filed on this, which precludes any residential development on that property, was that self-directed, self-imposed? Or did some government entity sort of force them to make that restriction?
I think the law has kind of forced that. That was involved back in the day with Ford Motor and Grand Sacra. So the property is in such condition that it really can't be used for residential purposes.
All right, and that's not just for making that decision or the developer making that decision. Is there, like, so either the state or the federal government somehow weighed in on that this property is so contaminated, you cannot put it?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. To the board, do they have any questions for the petitioner?
Chairman Moffett?
Oh, yeah.
If I have a question for the planning director, Julie?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Julie. Question, since there is a deed restriction on this property, like Jerry had just asked Mr. Kirk, what, if you can just explain maybe what else could be built there other than residential? Maybe so that the residents, everyone listening, what other types of properties? Would it be light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing, excluding all residential, so that the zoning has to change?
That is Raquel. With this deed restriction, anything but residential could be built on this property. Light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing, possibly, possibly some commercial, but, you know.
Also, all subject to rezoning, though.
Correct. That is correct.
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Kirk, let me call on you again. I mean, what are their recourses? What is Ford? Ultimately, it's Ford. These people have an option, the ones that are presenting us. If they can cut a deal, then they'll buy the property from Ford. But what's Ford's, what are their options on the property?
As far as you.
Yeah, as far as you said, I mean, so if, yeah.
Well, there might be some other uses, as Julie said, that are non-residential that might be acceptable. I'm just gonna say mini store, something along, something a little more passive, but it's not residential. So there's other uses, recreational.
Okay. But they would, okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Meredith, did you have some questions or comments?
Yes, Jerry. The question I had was that the operation is 24/7. Is there any way, when we talk to the planner, we talk to the process, to make it not 24/7 operations?
That would be, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Julie.
Um. Jean, that would be, in the light manufacturing district, we don't have any restrictions on hours of operation. However, you know, if the applicant would agree, this came in as a PUD application. If the applicant would agree to put those restrictions in there, that would be up to them.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
No, we've moved on. So Julie, do you want to go for your point, your plan, your report, the planning director?
Sure. So this is a conditional rezoning, and the applicant is tying the site plan with the rezoning. So if this rezoning, you know, is denied, they go hand in hand. Couple of things. Also, it came in as a PUD application. This is a two-step process, preliminary PUD and a final PUD. With the preliminary PUD, what we do is we take a look at the site plan and what they're proposing. If, in, you know, general, we accept that PUD, what happens is it goes to the township board. If they approve it, then what happens is the applicant will continue on with the site plan and attaining all their engineering and permitting processes through the county as well. And then the final PUD, they have to come back to the planning commission as well. And then again, it goes back to the township board. So that is how this rezoning works. And since it's a conditional, the rezoning and the site plan go hand in hand. So that is basically the process of this site plan and proposal. A couple of things I want to mention. We have been talking to North Point for quite some time, and we had asked them to reach out to the residents to make them aware of, you know, some of the issues with this property. And one of the issues is, like they had stated, is with the contamination on the site. Back, you know, in 1963, as we know, the site was zoned heavy manufacturing because of the Ford facility that was on the property. In 1997, it was rezoned. Grand Sacra came in and rezoned the property to R1C and R12. And as you see, most of the, you know, the Central Park property is there. Ford Land took over the property in 2005, when it was discovered that there was contamination on the site. So since 2005, the township has known that this site was contaminated, and hence probably the reason why it hasn't been, you know, developed for so long. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. And while I'm thinking about this, we also had, being that we were not able to livestream this meeting live, we also asked residents to either, provided the number to either call in or email the planning department. And I've also been monitoring the email for the planning department in case we get any comments or requests. So I just want to say that there was a Marilyn Bishop at 6679 Lexington Avenue that sent a quick email, and she was also opposed to this rezoning request. So I just wanted to note that for the record and didn't want that one to slip by. And back to the, back to the site plan and the rezoning. So as far as the rezoning goes, I think I covered that pretty well. Unless, you know, the only uses that we could do on this is light manufacturing or heavy manufacturing and possibly commercial, that that might be questionable. The second issue, you know, I understand the residents and, you know, there are areas of concern. And I certainly think that there's design options that we can impose, especially with this being a PUD. I think we can increase the berm along the south property line, possibly make it taller, higher. And I know that Mr. Rickard said that they are proposing a fence along that south property line, a wooden fence. Maybe we can, you know, figure out some other design options that would mitigate some of these issues that could be imposed on the residents. The other thing is parcel number one, which is the longest building along the east property line. That one is closer to the residential district. Perhaps we can, there's opportunities to move that building closer to 23 Mile to give the space between, you know, that building and the residential district. Another question I had was, right now, there is going to be a deficiency in parking, and the applicant is going to land bank over 500 parking spaces. Now, with the PUD process, they are required to provide 10% open space on the property, and we are yet to get those calculations. And I had a question on if these parking spaces that are land banked, will those spaces be, you know, will that land bank amount reduce if these parking spaces are ever considered or constructed, I should say? So that is one question I had. From the time, from the last meeting until now, the applicant has had an opportunity to address a lot of the questions that were, you know, in the planning department review. And they, I think they have done a good job addressing all these issues. But again, I think we still have to make sure that the residents, you know, if the planning commission decides to approve this, I think we still have some work to do in making sure that we can, you know, satisfy some of the issues that are out there. And like I said, that's berm and trying to protect the residents as much as we could. If that's the case here.
Okay, thank you. Ask the petitioner to get back on the camera, please. There were a few specific, I mean, I think you get the general gist from. Do we have, is the petitioner still on?
Yes, David and Brett.
Okay, great, great. Let's, there are a couple of issues that struck me, and then we can go through, so the general stuff. Someone indicated, you indicated that there were 720 trips per day on that southern road. I mean, of semi-trucks, 720? Did someone say that in a public meeting?
So Brandon Hayes or Mike Laberty, can you expand on that? That's our traffic engineering team.
Yeah, hi, Brandon Hayes here, Traffic Engineer, Road Professional Services Company, 27280 Hagerty Road, Farmington Hills, 48331. I was the lead on the traffic study. We did a trip generation projection for the entire site. And that's where that number came from, I believe, the number that was quoted. That is for the whole site. That is not specifically vehicular traffic on that southern road behind the buildings.
So that would be, that would be semi-trucks, that would be individual cars going to and from work, in and out lunch, whatever?
That's correct.
Total, total, total traffic, okay.
Yep.
They can't hear you, Brett.
How about, let's address, how about you guys address the sort of noise and noise, air inside pollution? Because those seem to be some of the largest concerns.
Yeah, this is Brett. And again, we have all our professionals on. Again, as we laid out, the sound study that was complete, you know, shows the decibel level below the 65 levels, which is allowed by the city. So, I mean, this is, it is science. There is a science to a sound study that takes into effect the setback. It takes into effect the berm. You know, I guess, you know, one question I have is that I'm a little confused. I heard, you know, that it was quiet. And then I heard from some residents that you could hear Amazon. And I think, you know, that's a little confusing, you know, for me as the applicant. Is it quiet? Or do people hear the Amazon operation? Obviously, Amazon has a 20-foot berm. It's not landscaped. There's no fence. So I think, you know, we're open, as the planner suggested. We're open to, you know, evaluating our site plan further to reduce the impact. If that means a taller berm, we're open to that. If that means if the issue is a wood fence isn't suitable from a static standpoint, we can switch to another material. I think specifically the eastern building, the single load, the long skinny building, building one. If that's, if that is the major concern from a planning standpoint, I think, you know, moving that or shrinking that building for its impact is something that we would entertain as well. We want to be, we want to try to limit this, you know, impact as well. So I think all of those things are on the table for us. I know, Jean, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. I'll call you mister, but it's not showing up under your screen. But the 24/7 operation for us is paramount. I mean, think about just the practicality, say, a Kroger or a grocery store. As we know, product comes in at midnight, product comes in at 2:00 AM. My dad was a trucker. You know, 4:00 AM, coming out of the warehouse to go to the grocery store is something that happens. Obviously, that's not your heaviest traffic. It doesn't happen at those times. But there are users that have to have a 2:00 AM or a 4:00 AM delivery because they're getting it, you know, to us as consumers, the things that we buy in the stores and buy online. Those are going to the FedEx and UPSes, you know, early in the morning. That's, that is a hard one for us to do. If we thought that we could lease it without that, we would agree. But I don't think it's viable. And I don't want to tell you something that I don't think is viable.
How about, so one of the presenters offered up a study that was prepared by Georgia State University, sort of impact of industrial, commercial, neighboring. And so you'd probably have to have some kind of awareness, as the largest industrial fund, you know, in the state, in the country, should have on some, I would hope some kind of comment on what impact your developments have on residential communities within that mile radius.
Yeah, so, you know, again, I'm trying to get a grasp of what neighborhoods in the 787 houses that was referenced in the study and the depletion. Obviously, you have industrial zoning next to these neighborhoods today. I heard that housing prices were going up. So I think that in practicality, I mean, I see a lot of head shaking, no, but I think that's what I heard was, you know, home prices, somebody bought this for 150 and now it's 300. Obviously, there's industrial next to this today from a zoning standpoint and industrial today from a use standpoint. And has it had an effect on housing values? I think what I've heard is that some of those quotes were from 2017, 2018. That's when Amazon came in. Statistically, it wouldn't say that those have had an effect on the home values of the neighboring. had an effect on the home values of the neighboring property with an industrial zoning and an industrial use that's adjacent. I don't, I can, I don't have a national study to say that. I have a practical study that was, you know, used tonight to say that home values were going up right next door.
How about commenting on, on any potential safety risks that your development will bring to that neighborhood? In that, that there isn't enough separation between what you're developed, what you're building and, and these, these, these homes?
Yeah. So again, just from what I heard, again, picking, making, you know, detailed notes tonight, the people that work, I, I do this all over the country and I, I sort of hear this, it's them and us, right? It's the people that work here and they're gonna break into our houses. These are people that live in your community today. They don't come to the warehouse to park, to come to your house to steal things. That's not, that's not, that's not what happens. These are people that live within fifteen minutes and twenty minutes. On one hand, I heard you can't hear anything. And then on the other hand, I heard three different people say they could hear gunshots. I don't think those are related to the people that work at Amazon. People that work at Amazon fire gunshots? I, that would surprise me. Those are people that are employed. Those are people that are getting background checks. Those are people, most often with most of our employees.
All right, how about, how about what, what's, what steps or if any steps to do, do you take in your developments?
Yeah. So we've got the fence, we've got the fence from a screening standpoint. Obviously, most of the tenants' fence themselves, almost all of them have onsite security. Everybody has, these buildings, almost ninety, I would say more than ninety percent have security systems, security cameras onsite. If you think about what's in an Amazon facility, those are all things that can walk away very easy. Everything is, everything is video. Everything has security. These, these aren't people that are causing problems and coming over to your, to your neighborhood to do that. These are people that are going to work every day. You're getting background checked. And the companies have to provide security to do that.
Okay. So finally, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you offer comment if you wish to, to probably the, the single greatest argument is that I bought this as part of a larger development. When I bought this house, when I bought my home, that was zoned a way that I found reasonable and acceptable. And now you're coming in after I've made this investment in making a change to, in what I, what I perceive to, to negatively impact, you know, and frankly, the aesthetic of having other single family homes or condominiums in that, on that site versus what you're proposing, you know, is stark. So how do you, how do you, how do you address that?
Yeah, what I would say is I think that this, you know, leads into the first question, which is, I don't know what, what folks were told at the time. I mean, I believe these folks were told that. There is a, there is a covenant. It will never be residential. It will never be residential. And you know, what I think we offer is a way for this to get back in productive use. I think we've tried to be as sensitive as possible with setbacks, noise, all those things. But this will, if this property will ever develop, it will have to be developed in a light or heavy industrial. That, that is it. And I think that, you know, we have put care into our plan and our thinking about setbacks and all those things. And if they were told that, maybe at the time that was the case. When it got rezoned to residential, and then what my understanding is, found out that you can't do it because of the contamination, it wasn't the recession that killed, but it was that you can't do it. You can't legally develop residential houses there because of the environmental contamination that occurs on that property.
Okay. I'll bring it for, to the board. Does the board have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Did somebody, no, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some of.
Port.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion, motion carries. Okay, so our, our decision on this proposed change in zoning must be based on the following. The practicality of the rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. This evening, we may recommend to the board approval of the request. We could offer, recommend disapproval of this request, or if, or we can table this further if we believe that there is more information that needs to be evaluated before we make a decision. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to postpone conditional rezoning petition six dash twenty and preliminary PUD site plan twenty dash twenty-four PUD dash seven for North Point Development LLC to be rezoned from R twelve multiple family low rise and R one C, one family residential to light manufacturing LM, and the preliminary planned unit development site plan based on the applicant further addressing the issues raised by the residents to the south.
Is there support?
Report.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Moore?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kirk?
Just a reminder, get the location.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just, I was just about to do it. So.
I don't want to go through it all, and then we have to come back.
Ah, that's good. I'm glad, I'm glad you're earning your keep. Commissioner Moore?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Thank you. Commissioner Meredith, you supported that, right?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Okay. Commissioner Grant?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Okay, did Mr. Turner join us? Doesn't appear to, Mr. Dalu, did you appear, join us? Hearing that, and the chair and Shelby Township votes yes to postpone. Okay. So when this is brought back to this body, all four hundred plus people that were, had notified of the public hearing will be noticed. And if you want to be included as, as additional information is provided, please contact the planning department. And I'm sure they'll be happy to, to share with whatever information comes before comes to the township. Planning Director's Report.
I don't have anything, Chairman Moffett.
Okay, thank you. Final, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Support by Meredith, support by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Good, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you and good night.